Welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday the 17th of July 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, can I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones and all other electronic devices, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not interrupt the meeting. Colleagues, it is my sad duty to formally report the deaths of Honorary Alderman and former Durham County Councillor and Sedgfield Borough Councillor Bill Blenkinsop and former Durhamshire District Councillor Margaret Jobling. Bill represented the Acliff Division on the County Council from 2001 to 2005. He also represented the Neville Ward on Sedgfield Borough Council from 1995 to 2009 and has been a town councillor for more than 30 years. Margaret represented the Ledgate Ward on Durhamshire District Council from 2003 to 2007. Can I ask the council to stand with me for a moment's silence? Thank you. We move to item one, the minutes of the meeting. Can I have a mover and a second?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please?
Thank you, councillor Hopgood.
Second minute, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Are the minutes agreed? Thank you. We move to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in the relation to any item of business on the agenda? Thank you. We move on to item three, the chair's announcements. Members, can I ask and remind everyone that we be respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. Please use the microphones when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the Director of Legal and Democratic Services, it will not be revisited. Thank you. Firstly, this morning, I would like to extend a warm welcome to the newly-elected councillor for the Coxo Division, councillor Viv Anderson. Viv, congratulations on your election. I hope you find your time on the council an interesting and rewarding experience. My congratulations also go to all those elected as members of Parliament for County Durham earlier this month. Also joining us this morning is Chester Cross. Chester is a year ten student from St Beads in Lanchester and is attending the meeting this morning as part of a week-long work experience. Chester, I hope you are enjoying your work experience. Welcome to our council meeting. I hope you enjoy the experience. Finally, this morning, back in May, I announced the Tiny Lives as one of my chosen charities for the civic year. Tiny Lives are an independent charity, so all their funds are raised by supporters. Like many other charities, they receive no government funding and need to raise £350,000 a year to maintain their service. I would like to play a small video at the conclusion of this meeting to show you the work of the charity. It will last around 10 to 15 minutes. If you would like to stay behind at the end of the meeting and learn a little more about the work they do, thank you. We move on to item four, the leader's report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members and guests. The summer event season is in full swing, and I hope those of you who attended last week's brass events across the county had a great time, despite good old British summertime weather. Of course, events are not only fun, but they're also a major driver of footfall and spending in the local economy. And as it happens, there was another cause for celebration last week in the shape of some newly released tourism figures. Members may recall that visitor spend in the county passed the £1 billion mark for the first time ever in 2022. The new set of figures out last week confirmed that visitor spend has risen again, climbing to a new record high of 1.23 billion in 2023. But that only tells part of the story because our visitor numbers and the number of people employed in tourism both surpassed pre-pandemic levels for the first time, too. So a lot to be positive about and still a lot more to look forward to, including this weekend's Durham City Run Festival and Seum Food Festival coming soon, too. On a related note, I can also confirm that I've been formally appointed as the Culture, Creative, Tourism and Sport Portfolio Holder for the North East Combined Authority. I've been fulfilling this role on an interim basis throughout the period of gearing up for the new combined authority, and I'm looking forward to continuing to champion all that the county and the region has to offer. Finally, I'm delighted to confirm that we have agreed to appoint Michael Lang as our new Corporate Director for Adult and Health Services, and he will take up post later this year as Jane Robinson will be retiring and leaving us in November. Michael joins us from his role as Director of Integrated Community Services with County Durham Care Partnership, and I'm sure you'll all join me in wishing him every success in his new role. And I'd also like to thank all members of the Chief Officer Appointment Committee who took part in the interview. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I? Can I ask the council to note the report? Item five, questions from the public. There are no questions that have been received for today's meeting. Item six, petitions. There are no petitions for today's meeting. Item seven, report from the Cabinet. There is no report for today's meeting. We move on to item eight, County Durham Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocation Document Adoption. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, councillors. Amy Haworth, Corporate Director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth. The purpose of this report is to seek full council's approval to recommend that the council agree the adoption of the County Durham Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations document. This is following its independent examination by planning inspectors appointed by the Secretary of State. Along alongside the policies of the adopted County Durham plan, the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document will contribute to meeting the strategic objectives of the County Durham plan. In step with the County Durham plan, this document will run to 2035 and supports the vision of a steady and adequate supply of minerals in accordance with the principles of sustainable development. It also provides policies to support the development of a network of modern waste management facilities which help to ensure that waste arisings are managed in accordance with the principles of our waste hierarchy. The document contains 24 policies. Its overarching development management policy seeks to ensure that proposals for minerals and waste development will not result in cumulative or unacceptable adverse impact on human health, the immunity of local communities, or the environment of County Durham. The document recognises the importance of the climate emergency and requires proposals for minerals and waste to demonstrate how they will minimise greenhouse gas emissions and how they have incorporated measures to adapt, mitigate, reduce vulnerability and increase the resilience of the future impacts to climate change. The plan also contains policies to ensure the benefits of mineral working are given weight in our decision-making. A policy to ensure that mineral working in temporary waste sites include high-quality restoration schemes. A policy is included which will enable proposals for lithium to be considered, which is a critical raw material needed for the transition to net zero. A number of site allocations are also included to provide certainty to where new mineral working and inert waste can be disposed, therefore providing certainty to the public and the minerals and waste industry, and also helping to enable the delivery of the built development in County Durham. The document was submitted for examination to the Secretary of State for the then Department for Leveling Up Communities, Housing and Communities on the 3rd of July 2023, under Regulation 2022 of the Town and Country Planning Regulations 2012. An examination in public of the document took place between the 26th and the 28th of September 2023. This was through public hearing sessions overseen by two appointed independent planning inspectors. Following the public hearings, further consultation then occurred between the 26th of January 2024 and the 8th of March 2024, on a schedule of main modifications to the document and other supporting documents. Fifty comments were received from 14 respondents, and these were used to prepare a statement of consultation which was published on the council's website and provided to the planning inspectors to assist them in preparing their inspector's report. The inspector's report was published on the 24th of May this year and is included in Appendix One of this report. The planning inspector's report concluded that the document was legally compliant and sound and provides appropriate basis for the planning minerals and waste in the county, provided that the main modifications are made prior to its adoption. The report recommends that the council, as local planning authority, adopts the document incorporating all main modifications as set out in the report in Appendix Two and additional modifications as presented in Appendix Three. On adoption of the document, it will replace all remaining policies saved from the existing Minerals and Local Plan of December 2000 and the Waste Local Plan of April 2005. Following adoption, any person aggrieved by the document may, under Section 113 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004, make application to the High Court to challenge, either on the grounds that it is not within the appropriate power or a procedural requirement has not been required with. Such application must be made within six weeks of its adoption. Chair, that concludes my report, and the full recommendations are set out in Section Seven.
Thank you so much for that report. Can I have a mover to the report?
Good morning, Chair. Moving the report, as councillor Elizabeth Scott's not here today. Members will recall that the County Durham plan was adopted in October 2020. However, that was not the end of the story, and the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document being considered today gives additional detail and clarity on what is required for new development to be acceptable, providing certainty for developers and reassurance for residents. This document sets out 24 mineral and waste policies which include policies relating to specific issues such as noise, air quality and transport. It also includes, as the Corporate Director said, policies on lithium which could assist the UK in meeting its future needs for this important critical mineral, and specific policies for waste development. In producing the document, we have engaged with the public and stakeholders at every stage of the document's development, making changes wherever we could. An independent examination by the planning inspector has found that it will provide a sound basis for planning of minerals and waste within the county. I therefore recommend to council that they agree the recommendations in paragraph seven of the report. Thank you, Chair.
You, councillor, can I have a second to the report? Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. This document allows us to ensure a steady and adequate supply of minerals, so important to the local economy. The supply of minerals will provide the raw materials the building and construction industry require to build and maintain the roads, homes, shops, offices, factories, hospitals, schools and flood and coastal defences that society requires. It will also support the development of a framework of modern waste management facilities which will help ensure that society's waste arising, society's waste arisings are managed in accordance with the principles of the waste hierarchy which gives priority to waste prevention, followed by reuse, recycling, recovery and finally disposal. I therefore second the recommendations to the council that they agree the recommendations at paragraph seven in the report. Thank you, Chair.
You, councillor. Before I invite speakers, are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report?
Thank you, Chair. I intended to ask a question, actually, but the gadget wasn't working. So if you don't mind, I'll go back to the question. It's the, it's the, there's been a recent High Court ruling in relation to a coal extraction in the south of the country, that the decision was made that the CO2 that was liberated through the burning of the coal needed to be considered as part of the planning assessment of the, you know, of the application. And that was, I mean, that's created a very different environment in which these sorts of applications are now approved or otherwise. And it could have implications, for example, on the, the, the deep coal mine that's being proposed in Cumbria, potentially putting that up for challenge as well. So I just wondered whether the implications of that very recent High Court ruling have a, have any impact on, on our plan here?
Yeah, I think I'd probably recommend that we take that one away for a review. Obviously, our plan was heard in advance of that ruling, but if I could offer to write back to councillor Elmer specifically and just look at that High Court ruling and assess it against the detail of our plans, and if, of course, the monitoring office can pick up on the legals.
I think I would say, councillor, that it's not uncommon for a council to adopt a policy, and then during the lifetime of that policy, case law will evolve, which perhaps, you know, gives a, will impact on the way in which policies are interpreted and applied. So if there is relevant case law that needs to be taken into account in accordance with the policy, then we will pick it up in that way. Clearly, if there's a, it's a significant, I'm trying to think of the word, like difference between the two, and the two, we, you know, we would require the policy to be revisited and amended, then obviously we would pick that up as part of, through the appropriate processes.
Can I just ask, are there any more questions? So can I now bring in councillor Marshall to speak?
Thanks, Chair. All I want to do is just to thank Amy and the team for the amount of efforts that's gone into bringing this policy forward and everyone else across the councils who's been involved with it. Planning's not often a popular service, and there's always a lot of opinions in bringing these documents forward, but I just want to thank them for the work that they've done on it.
Thank you, councillor Marshall. Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item nine, Homelessness and Rough Sleeping Strategy 2024 to 2029 and Delivery Plan. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to seek full council's approval for the adoption of the County Durham Homelessness and Rough Sleeping Strategy. The new strategy will run from 2024 to 2029 and replace the current strategy adopted by Cabinet in 2019, and has been prepared and consulted with in conjunction with the new housing strategy. The revised document has been developed following a detailed review of homelessness and rough sleeping in the county, as well as two rounds of consultation with partners, stakeholders, local members and residents. The first round of consultation ran from December 2022 to March 2023 and focused on developing the proposed four priorities which are set out in the strategy. The second round then focused on the draft strategy and ran from 30th October 2023 to the 18th of December 2023. The main messages from the consultation included overwhelming support for the vision and the four priorities, as well as the following themes: strong emphasis on the importance of partnership working and to successfully deliver the strategy and achieve our priorities; prevention of homelessness was key in the feedback, particularly working with families and young people to mediate and prevent them from being asked to leave a family home, and prevention of evictions; to ensure joint working with specialist support services to meet the needs of people with complex needs, for example, mental health, drug and alcohol addiction; and better access to affordable housing, including social housing and private rented, in particular for single, younger people and for larger families. Feedback also included the improved partnership working to reduce rough sleeping, and in particular with a focus on mental health support, including those key issues who require long-term support. The full summary and responses are set out in Appendix Four. The strategy sets out how we will aim to achieve four priorities of homelessness over the next five years. The priorities set out key areas where the council will focus activity to deliver the vision: Durham is a county where we all work together to eradicate homelessness and rough sleeping, and where everyone has a safe place to call home. The four priorities of the strategy are: to prevent people from becoming homeless; to improve access to and the supply of accommodation; to ensure the appropriate support is available for people who are homeless; and to reduce rough sleeping. The strategy will help address some of the major challenges that the council are facing in relation to homelessness. For example, the use of a temporary accommodation has increased by 170% since 2018 and 2019, resulting in increased costs to the council and challenges in finding accommodation. The strategy highlights the need to increase the supply of council-owned and commissioned temporary accommodation. The 12-month delivery plan sets out a number of outcomes and actions under each priority, and some key areas of work include: review of the Durham Key Options letting policy to ensure it is effective and fair to those people that are homeless or at risk of being homeless; delivery of a single homeless accommodation programme which will provide 32 units of council-owned supported accommodation for rough sleepers with complex needs; to work with commissioning teams to develop a strategic approach to providing housing for specialist groups; to improve standards across non-commissioned supported housing by the delivery of a supported housing improvement programme; and improved accommodation to support pathways for rough sleepers, victims of domestic abuse, migrants, those leaving prisons or hospital care. The number of people presenting with complex needs has increased by 13%. This is the largest increase across all cohorts, making up 26% of presentations. There is a lack of appropriate housing options for people with complex or additional support needs, including those with poor mental health, substance misuse or a history of homelessness and rough sleeping. The strategy aligns with existing or emerging strategies, including the County Durham Plan The strategy aligns with existing or emerging strategies, including the County Durham Plan and Housing Strategy for County Durham, and it will also support the delivery of the inclusive economic strategy by seeking to ensure that a lack of access to good quality housing is not a barrier to economic growth. As a result of the representation during the consultation and working with partners, a delivery plan has been developed for the first 12 months following the adoption and is set out in detail in Appendix Three. A more long-term delivery plan will be prepared following the adoption of the strategy. Chair, that concludes my report, and the full recommendations are set out in paragraph 10.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report? Councillor Shield.
Thank you, Chair. Can I begin by recognising the hard work put into the development of the Homelessness and Rough Sleeping Strategy by council officers and partners, and thanking residents and other stakeholders who have engaged in the process of making this a clear and focused document? The strategy is based on significant data analysis between April 2019 and October 2022, and extensive consultation. It is a very proactive approach with early interventions, utilising council-acquired, purchased and commissioned properties to offset the cost of bed and breakfast accommodation, hotels, holidays, all of which have had a detrimental effect on the council's finances and empty P F savings. This strategy also highlights the challenges that we as a housing authority face, and the details how we tackle the complex causes of homelessness by focusing on prevention and early intervention, working in partnership with our partners and stakeholders. The partnership approach will utilise a multi-agency homelessness forum, which will provide a strategic framework to maximise any future government funding opportunities. The strategy is very different from previous strategies. It will address the varying housing and support needs across the main groups of people who present to the council as homeless, or threatened with homelessness, including young people, people experiencing domestic abuse, offenders, rough sleepers, carers, people leaving hospital, veterans, larger families, and those with complex support needs. The preparation of a 12-month delivery plan with clear actions and outcomes will also ensure that there will be no delay in beginning the delivery of the strategy following adoption. Chair, this report went through cabinet meeting last Wednesday, and as there were no questions raised, I move the report is tabled. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can I have a second to the report? Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Homelessness can lead individuals and their families and friends into a cycle that can have a profound effect on all aspects of life. It is not just a lack of accommodation. Homelessness can affect our physical and mental health and wellbeing. Educational achievement, ability to gain and sustain employment, and puts pressure on personal and family relationships. The impact of homelessness devastates lives and is often a long journey for an individual to build their life up again. The Homeless and Rough Sleeping Strategy provides a clear strategic direction and vision of how we can address homelessness and rough sleeping across County Durham. I therefore second the recommendations in paragraph 10 of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Before I invite speakers, are there any questions on the report? Councillor Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you to the director and the team for putting the report together. I've just got two questions, if that's all right. Priority 1.2 states the increased use of our website and webpages to assist with self-help tools, but with all the cuts that's proposed to digital services, will that have an impact on that priority? And what about those who are homeless and without access to the internet? How do they get access to those? Technically, I've got three questions, because I've got another one. And the strategy also talks about increasing the council's stock, including buying properties at auction, but will the council seriously consider compulsory purchasing properties when they're becoming the issue, rather than reacting to the aftermath of the problems and buying them at auction? Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, so I can confirm that the website is a commitment, and that will be something that goes ahead in line with the document. There are a number of other ways in which we can communicate with people who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, including our helplines through the team as well as our direct contacts. So the website is more in addition to the communication options that are already there. In terms of the, in terms of the acquisition of properties, as members will probably be familiar with, it's quite a high test in terms of compulsory purchases, and there are a number of situations in where the council do that, including where it is the last resort to acquire homes for improvement. So I think that would, I think in answer to councillor Miller's question, it would depend on the circumstances, but we would work before we got to a compulsory purchase to try and work to make properties available in advance of that. And I'm sorry, I think I may have missed part of your, the question there, but let me know if I've missed anything.
No, no, that was all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other questions, Red Chested. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move on to item 10, County Durham Housing Strategy and Delivery Plan. Can I ask the corporate director of Regeneration Economy and Growth to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to seek county council approval to adopt the County Durham Housing Strategy as set out in Appendix Two. The current housing strategy was adopted in 2019, and the document sought to raise standards across private rented sector and provided strategic context for the expanded selective licensing designation. Furthermore, the 2019 strategy set out the importance of providing homes to meet the needs of the county's aging population, which framed the County Durham Plan Policy to deliver 10% of homes for older people, and including bungalows. The wider economy has changed significantly since the introduction of the 2019 strategy, and with the impact of COVID, the cost of living crisis, and rising levels of homelessness requiring a new strategy and vision for County Durham. In the national context, there is a shortage of homes, both market and affordable housing. The incoming government has announced plans to build 1.5 million homes in England over the course of the next parliament. Homes England Affordable Homes Programme 2021 to 2026 is ongoing and sets out the intention of delivering 180,000 affordable new homes nationally. The government identifies the provision of affordable housing as key to ending the housing crisis, tackle homelessness, and to provide aspiring homeowners with a step onto the housing ladder. The council will continue to work with government and Homes England to support the provision of affordable homes in County Durham. The housing strategy sets out the direction for housing activity in County Durham with a vision, with a vision to provide good quality housing that meets everyone's needs, is affordable for local people, and supports the provision of great places to live. The purpose is to set out the context as to how we meet the housing challenges we face. The housing strategy seeks to increase the delivery of affordable housing to meet our needs in the context of the current shortfall in delivery. In addition, the strategy recognises the importance of place-making, and that housing must complement the spaces around it so that people feel far to the community and can easily access services and amenities that they need. The housing strategy recognises the opportunity of devolution and place-based growth and regeneration. The strategy will help to deliver the ambitions of the County Durham Vision, the County Plan, the County Durham Climate Action Emergency Response Plan, and the Inclusive Economic Strategy, which all recognise that housing is a major enabler to achieving economic growth and better social outcomes for the, for our communities. We also recognise that the housing strategy is being developed in the context of our emergent evolution work, including strategic place partnership between the North East Combined Authority and Homes England. The housing strategy is being developed following two rounds of consultation with partners, stakeholders, and residents. The first round of consultation focused on developing the high-level principles and priorities of the strategy, and the second round focused on the draft strategy itself. This was undertaken between the 30th of October 2023 and the 18th of December 2023. The consultation determined that there was overwhelming support for the proposed vision, principles, and priorities. However, feedback was received suggesting changes to improve the document, and they were made wherever possible. In this context, the importance of meeting housing needs, issues with concentrations of private rented sector housing stock, and the importance of energy-efficient housing and partnership working came through strongly in the consultation. Also, as a result of the feedback made during the consultation and working with partners, including the County Durham Housing Forum, we have prepared a delivery plan for the first 12 months following adoption, and this is set out in Appendix Three. Cabinet has agreed to adopt the 12-month delivery plan subject to the County Durham Housing Strategy being adopted by the county council. A more long-term delivery plan will be prepared following the adoption. The 12-month delivery plan includes actions relating to key outcome areas for the delivery of the housing strategy, such as housing delivery pipeline with partners to access funding opportunities, a review of the current allocations and letting policy to ensure it meets the needs of customers, and delivery of supporting housing improvement plan to ensure it is fit for purpose. Chair, that concludes my report, and the recommendations are set out in section 11.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report? Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Can I begin by recognising the hard work put into the development of the housing strategy by council officers and partners, and thanking residents and other stakeholders who were engaged in the process of making this a clear and focused document? I believe that housing is more than just bricks and mortar. It is at the heart of families, communities, and our local economy. Whether renting or buying, there is clear evidence that having access to good quality, suitable, secure, and well-maintained housing has a profound impact on health and wellbeing, and therefore quality of life. A sufficient supply of housing, including affordable housing, is also a key component of achieving inclusive economic growth. The new housing strategy will build on the success of the existing 2019 housing strategy, which included bringing 955 properties back into use, seven and a half thousand pound, a thousand properties benefiting from new energy efficiency improvements, the issuing of nearly 13,000 licences in selective licensing areas, and over 4,000 properties receiving adaptations and securing a partner to deliver the Council House Build Programme. The County Durham Housing Strategy provides a framework to inform the actions and investments of the council and its partners, and will ensure the council is well-positioned to maximise the future opportunities for funding support. The housing strategy aims to support people to live independently with support where required, and remain in their homes for as long as they desire by ensuring houses are flexible to differing needs over their lifetime, including supporting family living and adaptability for older age. We also need to be much more to drive up the quality, and we, we also need to do much more to drive up the quality and standard of properties. Whether newly built houses coming through the planning system, or existing houses in the private rented market or affordable sectors, so that everyone has access to warm, safe, and decent properties that they can afford. Bringing back into use empty properties wherever possible is a key aim of the strategy, as this both helps deliver much-needed housing and tackles what is, what can otherwise be a blight on community. The actions and outcomes in the 12-month delivery plan that has also been prepared will ensure that there is no delay in delivering the strategy as the council develops a longer-term delivery plan. Some examples of the important outcomes of delivery plan include: deliver, deliver the Council House New Build Programme to deliver affordable homes to meet needs; develop a housing delivery pipeline to access funding opportunities; review the current allocations and letting policy to ensure it meets the needs of customers; prepare a temporary accommodation placement strategy to provide suitable accommodation for those in need and reduce costs; and deliver the disabled facility grants to enable people to stay in their own houses for longer. I therefore propose the recommendations at paragraph 11 in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Can I have a second to the report? Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. Second the report, and could I ask, am I allowed to, to reserve my right to speak on a, on an item and come back later if I want to? Or is it just with motions?
You are, because the rules of debate apply to reports that are presented, because effectively it is a motion to be moved and seconded.
Then I'll reserve my right to speak later then, Chair.
Obviously, if nobody else speaks, then you'll be brought in quite quickly.
Before I invite speakers, are there any questions on the report? Councillor Kevin Shaw?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Amy for the report before us today. When the housing strategy came before Economy and Enterprise Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I specifically asked why we were over three years into the five-year Council House Build Programme, and not one house had been built of the 500 to be delivered within the five-year period. We were told of various reasons why there was a delay in getting the House Build Programme started, but assured that the homes would still be delivered within the remaining timeframe. This report clearly paints a completely different picture. Not only will the timeline now be extended to 2029, but the 500 homes won't all be new build council homes. So can I ask how many actual homes will the council be building, not including acquisitions? And in relation to the wider housing strategy, we now have a massive elephant in the room which has not been addressed, which is the proliferation of HMOs now specifically in our former mining communities. Can I ask what the council are going to do to address the public's growing concerns of not only the number of HMOs themselves, but also the impact upon local services, amenities, successful, strong, and viable communities, and community cohesion, and the loss of very valuable family homes? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. In terms of the first question on the Council House Build, the target for council homes remains the same, and we would hope to deliver that still within the overall length of, of time, as I think may have been set out to scrutiny, although I apologise, I wasn't there. We have had a number of challenges with the delivery programme, and particularly around viability, so we did have to revisit a number of the plans to make sure that we still had a deliverable programme. We have now appointed a contractor, and there are two schemes which will commence next year, one in Peterley and one in Seam, so the aspiration for council homes remains the same, but there have, as with a number of construction projects, been some viability challenges in delivery that we've, we've had to revisit. To the second question, in terms of HMOs, and there is, as you know, there are standards both in planning terms for the threshold to meet a HMO, and then when a property does reach those terms and is successful with planning, they have a set of licensing criteria that they have to meet in order to be licensed, so the council will ensure that any properties that meet that threshold are managed.
Councillor Elmer, can I just clarify it's a question?
Yes, it's a question, Chair.
Thank you.
I remember the examination in public of the current County Durham Plan, and we were looking at projections of need in the area at the time, and one that really stuck out starkly to me was that the huge need for housing for older people, because we have an aging population in lots of parts of the county, and it's something like, the government projections were saying that something like 70% of new housing would be needed for, for meeting the needs of older people. Now, we have a policy that actually feels quite generous at 10%, but there's still a big, big gap between projections in terms of need and what our policy is requiring developers to provide. And so I wonder whether we're able to, to, you know, move in the right direction on that with regards to this piece of work, or whether that's something that will need to be addressed when we create the next County Durham Plan. will need to be addressed when we create the next County Durham Plan.
Yeah, thank you councillor Elmer. So there is, and I may get my policy numbers wrong here, but I think it's M4 perhaps that is the policy, which is for the increased standard on the percentage that we expect in older persons living, which was adopted, as you say, in the county plan and will continue as with any policy and change in national circumstances to continue to keep that under review and to robustly apply the policies that we do have with our existing developments.
Thank you. Councillor Crute?
Thank you Chair. I note in section 544 of the report that we're working to identify new HMOs that require a licence and take robust action against landlords who fail to comply. That looks to me like we lock on the door off the horse that's already bolted and given that preventative measures are often better than the cure. Have we explored other avenues such as looking at the selective licensing scheme with the criteria set out there and the targeted delivery plan areas as a template for issuing preemptive Article Four directives? Could that be done?
Yes, so there's a few bits to that question. I think in terms of the planning policy, so as you know, for those areas outside of an Article Four, the threshold for a home to be considered a HMO is six and then we do have an Article Four in County Durham in Durham City, which is four. To achieve an Article Four is a threshold that's got to be met locally in terms of the existing number of HMOs, so we do, we will continue to monitor and for any areas where they did meet that threshold, then it would be reasonable to consider looking at future planning policy, but that would be quite a high test to meet, so we would need to be able to evidence that. In terms of selective licensing and general licensing, where properties are determined as HMOs, they are obviously subject to our normal licensing criteria, but of course they do need to be designated as a HMO.
Could I come back on that Chair? I note that the threshold is currently six to meet the threshold for an Article Four directive. From what you've said, it proved that there can be exemptions to that where we've got a threshold of four in Durham City, so we can, you know, that gives us some hope that we can look at issuing an Article Four directive in other parts of the county. We understand the issues in Durham City, you know, why we have HMOs and, you know, the Article Four directives. This is largely becoming an issue in the former mining communities, principally down the East Durham coast and we need to be finding a way to take those preemptive measures. So this housing strategy will be coming back to scrutiny, it's in the Economy and Enterprise Work Programme, so we'll explore that avenue when we come to that point. But in the meantime, thanks for the answer, Amy.
Thank you. Councillor Moist?
Thank you Chair and thank you for the report. It's very comprehensive, 137 pages and it also includes cabinet decisions made in June, July of last year. I welcome the housing strategy and especially the comments based on the incoming government increasing the number of houses to be delivered, which is fantastic news. However, I must point out on page 393.5.8 of this report.
Councillor Moist, is it a question?
Yes, it is a question. It might lead into the debate later, but it is a question. I believe it contains somewhat different details to the housing strategy presented to scrutiny for approval earlier this year, December 23. In the report to the Economy and Enterprise USC, it stated that DCC through the cabinet would deliver 500 new build council homes, as councillor Shaw has said. This wasn't the overall target, this was a specific target for new build council homes in addition to, I think from memory, the acquisition of 179 other homes to come under council control. So just to contradict your information you gave earlier, the total target of council homes to be delivered was not 500. The 500 referred to 500 new build council homes. In addition, there would be extra council homes delivered through other means, acquisitions, which is covered in this report later on. Councillor Rollinson, the cabinet member responsible, absolutely stated this on a number of occasions.
Councillor Moist, can we get to the question?
Absolutely, but it refers to what happened at scrutiny. So I have to ask, in this new housing strategy that we're being asked to approve, it contains different data to the policy put forwards towards scrutiny earlier and I have to ask the question, why? Should changes to a scrutiny report not be expected to be re-presented to scrutiny before being brought to full council for approval? And I note in the papers today, the draft strategy and delivery plan will be considered by cabinet and full council in July 2024. Have the cabinet also approved this strategy prior to this meeting? Thank you Chair.
Yeah, happy to come back on this, so just to clarify in terms of the terminology, the aspiration in the plan is to still have 500 homes in council ownership, which will include new builds and it will also include, of course, for any properties that we acquire would also require significant investment, so just to clarify, that was the difference in what I said, so apologies if there was any confusion there in my answer. In terms of the role of scrutiny and what was applied, we of course, as you know, presented the strategy to scrutiny we set out in the document where we've received feedback and how that's been addressed in the document and that meeting to scrutiny is a critical step in advance of then taking a document through to cabinet for approval.
Chair, can I just come back? Yeah, sorry, again, I'll be clear here. Scrutiny was presented with a target by councillor Rollinson and confirmed from the previous housing strategy in 2019 of 500 new builds plus additional council homes and I think it was 179, which would make it 679. We're now saying we're going to go back to just deliver 500. Thinking about the comments made earlier about the need for more homes than the incoming government, I can't understand why the target that scrutiny were given has suddenly been reduced and that never came back to scrutiny. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd suggest that I can't comment on comments that were made at scrutiny not by myself and I wasn't there, so I think just given the comments, it would be helpful if we just clarify the difference there. In terms of the, and Helen may want to come in, in terms of the coming back to scrutiny, the way that we've done this document and others is to consult with scrutiny in advance of the cabinet approval, which wouldn't necessarily mean that if, that the document would come back to scrutiny prior to cabinet when we've already been to scrutiny once. Yeah, just to say, I mean, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to have advanced notice of the question and the potential discrepancy because we would have been able to check back as to what was said at scrutiny in December. But Amy is correct, there was a report that scrutiny were consulted on. The document that was presented to cabinet last week included this report and it is that report, it is this report that cabinet has agreed for recommendation for approval today. There is no requirement for it to come back to scrutiny if things have changed since it was last consulted and clearly it was in the, it was on the agenda for cabinet last week, so it was considered there and the usual rules in terms of members being able to ask questions etc apply.
Councillor Moist?
Yes, I was just going to say thanks to the monitoring officer for that clarification. However, the minutes of the meeting held in December are available and it can be checked on and I'm sure I'm correct, thank you.
Angela Sirtis?
Thank you Chair. Chair's Vice Chair of Economy and Enterprise, I'm going to have to agree with councillor Moist on this one because we actually had the housing strategy presented to us in April of this year.
Can I just clarify it's a question?
It's a question, it's a question. We did have the housing strategy, you know, presented to us at scrutiny in April and we also had cabinet member councillor Rollinson there and on both of those occasions, it was 500 new builds. So my question he raises, I'm now asking, if we were verbalised 500 new build homes and it was in April new build homes, why has the report suddenly changed in two months to say 500 council owned homes? Because that is very different and as Vice Chair of Economy and Enterprise, I would have preferred to have been consulted in that even before it went to cabinet, not that I'm like dismissing cabinet's decisions, but scrutiny has parity with cabinet and we should be given that courtesy and respect. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, I think I'd just reiterate what the monitoring officer has already said in terms of absolutely noted and will happily explain that difference. Obviously we haven't had advanced notice of these questions, but the point is noted.
Councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I wasn't going to ask a question and councillor Sirtis has kind of touched on it. In the previous report on, sorry, I better put my glasses on, on the previous report in section 20, para 25, it talks about a presentation to Economy, Enterprise Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Yeah, so we do do that and we know we do that. My question is, the report has changed, it has been to scrutiny previously, the report has changed, why hasn't it been presented to scrutiny before we're here today? It's semantics about why it's changed, I appreciate that, but as a courtesy, why wasn't it shared with in to Economy, Enterprise, Overview and Scrutiny Committee? These are fundamental changes, why did that not happen?
Chair, I think I'd just reiterate, there was no requirement for it to be shared with scrutiny again, so I don't know the reasons for it, but there was no requirement for it to be reshared.
Councillor?
Chair, can I just come back on that? If the precedent is being set on the previous report where they are brought back to Economy Overview and Enterprise, if I can just read this, it says a presentation to members of the Economy, Enterprise and Overview and Scrutiny Committee was held on the 18th of December 2023. The comments received fed into the final strategy. A follow up session was held in 2022, 22nd of April 2024, where it was demonstrated how the committee's comments had been addressed. There was a small number of comments etc, it goes on. That is the previous report, that is the precedent we're setting, so whether there's a mandatory requirement or not, the previous report has gone back, there's fundamental changes to this report and it hasn't gone back to scrutiny. So if we're saying, fine, it doesn't need to, then fine, but we need consistency surely.
Your councillor. Councillor Boyes?
Thanks Chair. Can I ask Amy, how many of the proposed new builds of the 500 are going to be built outside of the main towns, bearing in mind that 50% of our population don't live in the main towns and new builds help to regenerate where the whole of the economy? I sat on the board at Believ Housing and their whole housing strategy was based on the towns, because there's more demand granted, but what I've just said about regenerating other areas other than new towns, where the towns in County Durham, are any of these houses going to be built outside of the towns?
Yeah, so, and sorry councillor, in terms of the main towns, I'll assume you mean probably some of the more populated areas. So there's proposals to deliver a number of sites across the county, including in some of the more rural and remote areas. That is determined by a number of factors, including the council's own land holdings because we have generally prioritised sites in our ownership, but the overall pipeline does deliver for sites across the county. But if there's any particular areas where you want to speak to me, to ask a question in terms of are there going to be houses in those sites, then I'm happy to provide that information offline with the detail of the programme as it comes forward.
Thank you. Councillor Tinsley?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I do have a wider point about the strategy I'd like to bring up in the debate, but a specific question. If we adopt this today, is there a potential that the council will be providing houses, these 500 houses, that would otherwise have been provided by other providers such as the housing associations or registered providers? I think what everybody's key is that it's about delivering more houses and we don't want to be in a situation where we're not delivering more houses, we're just delivering houses that would have otherwise been provided. Is that potentially an impact as a result of this change? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your question councillor Tinsley, it's a really good point. So we are working in partnership with the registered providers across County Durham and particularly the four largest providers who have not only existing holdings but plans for their new development sites, so we collectively share our pipelines across County Durham, whether that's with Carbon Home, Believ, as well as the Council House Programme to make sure that the two things are complementary. So in direct answer to your question, we've got mechanisms in place to make sure that we're not as a council replacing what the registered providers might already do and that we are filling the needs and the gaps and particularly thinking about my early reports on issues like homelessness.
Councillor Watson?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, it's fine having a good housing strategy as such, but should this not be, should there not be a requirement that we have the necessary infrastructure to support the housing strategy? People constantly tell me that trying to have more houses, but we haven't got the health services, we haven't got the schools, we haven't got the proper infrastructure to support this extra housing. Is it not a requirement there Chair?
I can take that, I mean, you know, in answer, yeah, it's absolutely essential for the housing strategy and for planning. Every site that we look at in planning terms is obviously subject to an assessment of its connectivity, whether it be that by transport, be that to local services, so I think in answer it is absolutely essential. It should be picked up not just by this strategy, but as our broader plans as a council and regionally and is part of the assessment process for any planning application.
Thank you. There are no more people registered to ask a question. Does any member wish to speak on the report?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I think this housing strategy, it does represent a real lost opportunity specifically related to the issue of HMOs, which has been raised by my colleague councillor Shaw and others. I think everybody's aware that across the county, particularly in our mining communities, there's real issues about loss of family homes connected with HMOs and issues around community cohesion associated with transient communities. Now, I think, as been mentioned earlier as well, that many people are aware that we do have a tool in planning legislation called Article Four Directions. They are in place in parts of County Durham, Framagat Mua, Pity Me, Newton Hall, Durham City, which allow us to control HMOs. It doesn't stop HMOs happening, it just allows us to control them and ensures that any applications for HMOs come to the planning authority and ultimately come to us as councillors to decide if they're appropriate. And I think there's the opportunity for us to adopt that in this area. Sorry, I've just lost my notes. Okay, I think in connection with the potential for an Article Four direction, there's also the potential that we could adopt supplementary planning guidance that would allow us as the planning authority to determine when these should be developed and they should be allowed to occur. We're not saying that there aren't situations where HMOs may be appropriate, they may be appropriate in situations, but the key point is at the moment, in the situation across most of this county, there is no control and that by introducing an Article Four, there is control. So what I'm suggesting is that I've taken on board the points of the corporate director, but this now is the right time to actually go and consult across our communities, to consult with central government and to consult with the mayor, because this is an issue not just in County Durham, it's right across the Low Valley housing areas in the north east of England. So I think we now, I'd recommend that this council moves to do that because this issue does need to be addressed and controlled in County Durham because the situation we're in now is unsustainable in many of our communities and that's a situation that can't be allowed to continue. Thank you Chair.
Your councillor Tinsley. Councillor Moist?
Thank you Chair. Just want to...
Just want to, in this debate, let full council be aware that a number of things have been said today. And one was the delays. I accept things do change, COVID and cost pressures, but if none of these issues could have impacted on the non-delivery of the Phantom 500 new build homes, because nothing had happened. As the director has just informed us, the contract has just been appointed now, so therefore there's been no delay in the construction of these homes, there just hasn't been any activity for the past three years. In light of what's happening, and you have to excuse me, I'm not Oireanna on process and procedure, but really, there's a recommendation that the council adopt the council housing strategy as it is today. Personally, I can't adopt this because I think it's not correct. There's been information given that was not presented to scrutiny. And personally, I think this needs another look at. And as the director herself had said, there is a need to work with the new government to increase the number of homes and not just accept a reduction in the homes, which is what this housing strategy is. So for the debate, I just don't think this housing strategy is suitable for the residents of County Durham. We need more homes, not less. And this housing strategy reduces the targeted number of new homes for the residents of County Durham. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Richard Bell?
Thanks, Chair. We've had a lot of to-ing and fro-ing on what was said at scrutiny over various months and gone by. This strategy was presented to Cabinet last week. The papers were out to Cabinet the week before. It would have been helpful had we had some of this clarified before this meeting, rather than bringing points of detail back and forth. I struggle to see councillor Moist's last point about building fewer houses when we're talking about 500 new ones, but hey ho. I just want to come back to the question of Article Four directives, which some people seem to be saying it's just a matter of council will, why don't we do it? My understanding that is that the hurdle for an Article Four directive is quite high. There has to be areas with a high density of HMOs, and as far as I'm aware, in the county, that's only in the city of Durham, where there's been an awful lot of HMOs created in the past. Higher, high density, where there is evidence of a detrimental impact on the local community, we can apply to government to implement an Article Four direction. So A, it's not just a matter of why don't you do it, it's in our gift, because it's not. And B, you have to have high density and you have to have evidence of detriment to the local community. I agree with one of councillor Tinsley's comments, namely that we should be consulting with central government on this. We're going to hear a lot in the King's Speech today about planning and freeing up development, blah, blah, blah. I would say this is absolutely the right time for colleagues opposite to be talking to the government and saying, "HMOs are a problem, we need you to do something about the regulations, we need to make Article Four directives easier." That, I would suggest, for me, is the takeaway from this council today.
Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just want to pick up a couple of points that's been raised. If I refer you to page 392, right at the bottom, it tells you there are up to 2,250 private rented properties within the DH1 postcode, which are mainly HMOs, many of which have been approved by members sat opposite here. It wasn't a problem then. So the question I have is, we do have an Article Four in Framilgatmua, in Newton Hall, and we brought that forward, and there's one in Belmont and Gilesgate, but it applies where there is less, there is going to be more than 10% in a street of HMOs. And that's what the criteria had to be to get an Article Four, for 10% of the properties in any one postal code, in any one street to be HMOs or more. So in Durham City, actually, there's probably, if you're lucky, in some streets, one property that isn't an HMO, but that wasn't a problem in the past. And when I've heard about building more houses, luckily, I have quite a good memory. So I sat in this chamber in a planning committee for the old fire station site at Framilgatmua. And I sat here while the Labour members in this authority objected to having off-site provision of 12 affordable homes, because we could provide them 200 metres away and create 12 houses for local people. But they didn't want that. They wanted two houses on the site. And because of the cost of the site, we lost 10 affordable houses for the community that needs it. So in terms of the sites and the undeliverability, so picking up on what councillor Moist has raised, and I believe I have raised it in this chamber before, but I'll just remind people, we inherited quite a few sites that had been put up for council house building.
One, Nick, councillor.
Thank you. One of them was in Brandon. I can't remember the type of weed that's in there, it might have been Japanese knot weed, but it requires five years to have been clear of that weed before it can even begin to be looked into. So I ask the question, why wasn't that done by the previous administration? Why identify a site that can't physically be built on in the first place? And then we had one for a bungalow provision that was built on such a hillside, it wasn't eligible to have bungalows on, because people wouldn't have been able to use them. So we have inherited what we have, and I would ask you, because I've just had a copy of the report sent from scrutiny, and it does say, at that scrutiny report, 500 houses, and it doesn't refer to them being new build, it refers to repurposed and new build.
Your councillor. Councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Chair. There's quite a lot of rhetoric there. I don't think the leader understands that the sites that were presented weren't presented by members of the Labour Party themselves or the controlling Labour group, they were presented by officers. So I think if you've got a concern over the suitability of the sites that were chosen, that's probably where you should be directing your issues. Chair, and I know this report's deferred, I don't think it addresses the issues effectively regarding the HMOs. We need to deal with the discrepancies that's been raised here today between scrutiny and Cabinet. And we need to set a clear position on how we prevent unregulated positioning of HMOs, which this policy does not materially address. I'm well aware of what the Article Four designations are and how they can be used. We have selective licensing areas where over 20% of the properties are being run by private landlords. We've introduced selective licensing schemes to improve the areas that were previously being run by unregulated landlords. I think this is a perfect opportunity to look at the legality of being able to introduce Article Four designations in these areas. I've already asked the question, I haven't yet gotten an answer. So with all respect, Chair, I know that we defer this report.
Councillor Shaw, I am assuming you have proposed a motion without notice. Do you have a second, there?
Okay, members, so we've got a motion without notice, which has been moved and seconded to adjourn this item to a later meeting. Just bear with us whilst we load the system, we will put that to a vote.
So, Chair, could I ask a question, please?
Yes, councillor.
Just clarify, if we're going to vote to defer this report, does that then mean that it delays the work that we're doing?
It will, because the strategy hasn't been adopted until such time Cabinet, Council passes the resolution that it's adopted.
Sorry, so do we have the ability to speak on this deferral?
Yep, so councillor Wilkes has indicated that he wishes to speak on the motion without notice to adjourn, so we will move into a debate on that item.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Managing Officer. It appears to me that the main issue here is to do with HMOs. However, as we all know, government needs to change certain rules if you want to actually stop HMOs, and there's a question as to whether people would want to stop HMOs or not. We've had thousands in Durham City. The reality is that you will not stop somebody converting a HMO in the east of the county by deferring this report. You've got to get to the level, a certain level, before you can even put in an Article Four in a particular area, as already has been suggested. What this deferral will do is delay our strategy. Now, we've gone from having two council-owned properties to over 140 in the last couple of years since we took over this county. You didn't build any for the Labour Party in a decade. I don't want us to delay further this strategy. There is no need to defer this report, there is no need to delay what we're doing in order to address the issue that's been raised. You've got 410, is it, or 412 MPs down there in London? Surely between all of you here, you can get in touch with at least one of them and say, "Please, can you help us deal with the HMO issue?", instead of actively trying to delay the building of council homes, actively trying to stop us from getting on with the job. I'm very proud of the fact that we've gone from two to 140 something houses, and I'm proud of the fact that we're getting on with the job. And I was hopeful that everybody in this room wanted to get on with the job of building new homes. It says here, we're going to build, there's going to be 836 affordable homes built across this county by a whole raft of different organisations. Why are we going to sit here now and defer and delay getting on with this job? It just strikes me as bonkers. So I will not be voting to defer this report, because we've got to get on with the job of building houses and making sure that we bring more empty homes back into use and all of the other things that's in this report.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sexton?
Thank you, Chair. I did have my number in the queue, I was going to raise a point about, I wasn't sure whether councillor Wilkes actually was in the queue, but he was allowed to speak on the motion. I pressed long before that, so I don't know what happened there. I wanted to make a statement basically on the whole conversation today, and it's not just about HMOs, it's not just about building new homes, affordable homes. Combined the report, I don't really have much of an issue with the report, other than what we've already raised. And I think it's clear, I was concerned that the Monitoring Officer had said that the report did not need to come back to scrutiny yet, as I mentioned previously. Other reports today we've mentioned have been to and from scrutiny. But if a report fundamentally changes, then it should, surely, go back to scrutiny. Maybe we should reconsider that. I will support the motion to defer this, because I think it seems to have been fundamentally changed and surreptitiously tried to push through.
Councillor Sexton, the point was addressed. Moist?
Yes, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to raise a point that councillor Hopgood said, that she had a copy of the minutes and 500 new builds were not mentioned. Can I suggest that councillor Hopgood looks at the amended minutes at the last Overview and Scrutiny Committee, where the, it was agreed and passed, it should read, "The delivery of 500 new build council houses." New build. So I just suggest councillor Hopgood gets the up-to-date information before saying that the minutes did not include new build. Thank you.
Mr Moist? Councillor Tinsley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I don't think it's anybody in this room who knocked on a door in County Durham in the last couple of months and didn't realise that housing's a hugely important issue for people we represent. I think it's not about politically bickering between ourselves, it's about getting this right for people. And I think what we have to be aware is that it's worth actually just taking a pause here to make sure we get something right that delivers, rather than adopting a strategy that isn't going to give the numbers, it isn't going to address the HMO issue correctly, which is the key issue facing a lot of our communities in County Durham. So I think two things, points I would like to make. On the issue of HMOs, if you look at the actual draft strategy that went before Cabinet last week, there is one sentence on page 15 of the report that refers to HMOs. That's letting down the people of County Durham if we proceed on the basis of one sentence addressing this hugely important issue. And then when we come to the issue of HMOs, sorry, of Article Four Directions, my understanding is that an Article Four direction can be adopted where it's expedient to do so to protect local amenity and the wellbeing of an area. Now, I'm feeling that in a certain amount of communities, where the likes of myself and councillor Shaw represent, we are definitely moving towards that threshold. So pausing now for a short period of time for reconsultation, the new context is provided by government and provided by what we are listening to and hearing from our communities, now is the time to do that. So I would encourage you all to support this short pause, vote consultation, and then we can move forward with a strategy that works and delivers for the people of County Durham, because the danger is, if we adopt this now, it won't do that. Thank you.
Councillor Elmer?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I've been involved in fighting conversion of houses to HMOs for some years, and it's obviously been a serious problem in Durham City. It's now appearing in other parts of the county, so I absolutely agree with a lot of what's been said, but across the chamber, actually, in relation to the problems that that's causing. But it's always been something that's been addressed through the planning system and through the County Durham Plan, and as we've said, through Article Four declarations and Article Four directions, I apologise. And I just, I feel that there's some real confusion setting in in relation to this debate, because the housing, the County Durham housing strategy looks at other issues. And the impression has been given that there's a huge omission here by it not addressing the issue of HMOs, but that's because that's addressed by another part of the council's work. So I just think that we could well be going forwards and looking at this strategy in a light that isn't really intended. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Richard Bell?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Elmer's said much of what I was going to say, really. It's very disappointing that members are seeking to delay this strategy and today the good work that we will do on housing to address an issue that is only tangential to this report at best, HMOs, which we've already explained is essentially a matter for central government regulation, and they know where to go with that today. So as I've said before, contact your MPs and get them to raise it with central government, because the answer will come back. We cannot do what you want to do under Article Four Directions, we simply can't. We've all agreed on the need to provide more housing of all types across this county, and frankly, I'm astonished that because of the HMO issue, which we can do next to nothing about, and the debate over whether or not the 500 houses are new or refurbished, I am absolutely astonished if every member in this chamber believes, as I do, that we need more housing across this county, that members would seek to frustrate these plans and delay these plans from happening. If this isn't playing political football with an important issue, frankly, I don't know what is.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Couple of points. Firstly, apologies, Amy, you've been stood up there an awful long time, and I know there's a tremendous amount of work gone into this by the team, but I do think it's something that we need to get right. And I think the starting point for me is that this is yet another example of this council being devoid of any sort of political leadership or any sort of political accountability for the decisions it makes. We've got appeal costs up in planning, we've got housing providers chomping at the bit to get social housing built, private housing built, they're being knocked back, planning committee after planning committee by politicians, despite officers trying their best to highlight the planning policies that they're all comply with. Look at the amount of time that allocated sites and snightly have taken to get delivered, still nothing on the ground there. I think, Chair, what we need to do with this is, we do need to knock it back, not just because of the Article Four designations, because for me, if something's good enough for the city of Durham, it's good enough for our ex-mining communities around this county as well, and we shouldn't lose sight of that. We need to make sure that there is a recognition that this is a problem, and the quicker we face up to that problem as a council, the quicker we can deal with it. And if it's not something we can deal with directly, we need to work with others. Engage your looks for once, rather than your mouths, and actually go and speak to people, listen to people, and then build partnerships and work collaboratively to deliver on a section four for some of our communities. Chair, it is the responsibility of the leader of the council and the cabinet member to make sure that the political strategies of this council are aligned to the political expectations of the members, and this is the only thing that we've got here. This has been discussed in scrutiny, the comments- This has been discussed in scrutiny, the comments of scrutiny have been totally ignored and disregarded, and then haven't been, the report's been changed between scrutiny and Cabinet, which was only last week. So it's the first time many of our members in this chamber have had to actually comment this report. The best thing to do is to defer the report, to get our heads together around the table on how we're going to do, deal with the discrepancies and with the Article Four issue, and to bring something back that's fit for purpose for our communities. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor. Can I just remind us all just to be courteous to each other? Councillor Simon Wilson?
Can I just ask a question, you know, that came out from this debate, as around the fact that councillor Wilkes said that this would stop the house building? As I understand, this wouldn't. That's already in place, and this is just the change of what would be going forward with regards to this. That seemed incredibly disingenuous when this was something that was actually put forward to be done already, and the coalition have not delivered at all on, as has been said by councillor Shaw. So within that, I just think that in terms of this, that's a red herring to say you are stopping the build and we are not, this can still go ahead, there is still an existing element to do this. It's just something that what we're doing here is, and what we're asking for is to tighten up some of the rules around here, which actually, when the discussion around things like planning committees has been mentioned, it actually gives a bit more teeth or a bit more power to the planning committees to actually get the teeth into some of these situations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Chair, if I could perhaps clarify my comment, because I think it was my response to councillor Wilkes' question that's perhaps led to that. Councillor Wilkes asked if this would delay our work in relation to this, and I said yes, because the strategy hasn't yet been approved. It will delay our delivery of the proposals within this strategy. Yes, housing build, house building will continue, but it will be outside of this strategy and won't necessarily follow the coherent plan that we would wish it to.
Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Just a couple of points, and I was at a meeting yesterday that councillor Marshall was at, where he stated that there are many opportunities other than full council for members to have their say. One of those last week was Cabinet, and actually, last week we did have one member of the opposition in attendance, although I believe he may have left before this item came on the agenda. He may not, so I apologise if he didn't, but he certainly didn't speak. So every member of this chamber has access to the Cabinet papers one week before the Cabinet meeting, they all have the ability to submit questions, they all have the ability to attend, and nobody submitted any questions, nobody brought up any issues. Councillor Tinsley is absolutely spot on in his comment that housing is a huge issue on the doorsteps of every part of this county. So I am beyond disappointed that the opposition choose to, and it's not a minor delay, it's not a slight delay, we're about to go into recess, there won't be another Cabinet meeting till September, then whatever you think needs to be in here that's not in here, we'll then have to go through the same processes again. So if we get this back before the end of the year because of the way that we have to do things, we'll be lucky. So this is going to be a significant delay to the housing strategy on the basis of one item, which I'd like some clarification, if I may, from the director, that actually can be addressed, the HMO issue way outside of this. And this is also a strategy that is reviewed on a continual basis. So if it's not working, if you're not happy with it after a few months, then it comes back for review. But to actually defer it now and put things off for potentially another five months is irresponsible. And anyone who votes to defer this is actually saying to people that we aren't interested in delivering for the people of County Durham, which is completely contrary to the motion we're going to discuss later.
Councilors, it is disrespectful to shout across the room, have already asked us not to do it, and I know debates get heated, and this is a one that will get heated, but if we can just remember where we are and the people that put us here. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yes, it could be dealt with outside of the strategy, insofar as what we would need to review here would be the conditions, as we've said, against national planning policy in terms of any area to become under an Article Four. You may expect a future iteration or relevant iteration to have reference to it, but it would be my opinion that it could be done outside of that process.
Thank you councillor McDonald.
Thank you Chair. Amy, can I just say I'm really, really sorry to you and your offices for all of the time and effort, energy that you've put into producing this strategy for us. A week before the Cabinet met to review the strategy, every single member in this room had sight of that strategy and no one said a thing. Every member in this room had access to that strategy last week when they got the council papers, and no one said a thing. This is yet, as Richard said, another example of political footballing just because they can. And can I say to councillor Shaw, I've been dealing with HMOs in Peterleigh since October last year. I haven't seen you at any one of the meetings I've attended, but I'm glad you brought up the issue today. I'd like to say to Amy, because I've looked at the Article Four situation, and I've looked at the situation with HMOs and how they can be allowed to happen under the radar of this council, because unfortunately, there are too many unscrupulous landlords who want to make a fast book by converting their homes to four or five bedrooms for individuals, rather than rent it out for £350 a month. They can charge these individuals £300 each for their rooms. That's the issue we have here. We've got people who are trying to make a fast book on the situation so many people find themselves in today. Sorry Amy, you're in the position you are, I'd like to support that we actually continue this strategy and approve it today, and that we have an addendum to talk about on the HMO situation. Thank you.
Councillor Coot?
Thanks Chair. It's just a point of clarification, if I can ask please, I know there's been a lot of reference to the 500 figure, Amy, but on the papers for the meeting on the 22nd of April on economy and the enterprise, when you go to page 69 and you look at paragraph 5.8 and reference the 500, it says, delivering 500 council houses as part of the council house delivery programme. This includes both new build schemes and a programme of targeted acquisitions. So I just wanted to reference that Chair.
Thank you. Frenic?
Thanks Chair. I'm just really going to ask, please support this motion to delay the report, especially now that this issue of HMOs is so crucial at this very minute in our communities. We can't ignore the requests and huge concerns that our residents have at this moment, we have to get this right from the off. HMO strategy needed to be included in this report, and I'm surprised that councillor McDonald hasn't had the presence to have this included, because it's happening in our town of Peterleigh. Thank you.
Councillor Hood?
Thank you Chair. I just want to refer to a letter that was sent out this week, and I'll read out just one paragraph. This government has committed to working with local and regional government to establish partnerships built on mutual respect, genuine collaboration and meaningful engagement. This means working closely with councils across the country on a cross-party basis. That's the words written by the new Deputy Prime Minister, Angela Rayner. And with that in mind, and I believe it's just been announced in the King's Speech, that housing is a main priority for the new government, and the Prime Minister, in his words, is looking to take the brakes off building new housing and social housing. Can I therefore ask that we have a named vote so that the people of County Durham can see who and which members of Durham County Council are committed to building new housing and those who are putting their foot on the brakes? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hood, that would take 10. For a named vote, thank you.
Thank you Chair, councillor Chris Lines from Searchfield. I just wanted to clarify something, that the draft housing strategy has been presented to the Economy and Enterprise Overview and Scrutiny Committee three times in recent months, in December 2023, April 2024 and July 2024. In each of those meetings, the report presented has simply referred to 500 council homes. I know there have been debates about the configuration of those 500 homes, but there's been references in this debate about changes. There hasn't been a change, the report has always said 500 council homes, and after the last scrutiny committee meeting, which was in July, as councillor Hopgood, councillor Coot and others have said, there was an opportunity for councillors to attend Cabinet and ask questions about that 500 new homes, but the figure has not changed once. So any reference to that figure having changed, I feel is inaccurate.
Councillor, councillor Sirtis?
Thank you Chair. I'm going to take this back to what this is actually about, and it's about communities here, and it's about making sure that we get this housing strategy delivery right, and that we include all forms of houses, all forms of people, everything. And I've just heard councillor Hood say there that we should be working across the chamber with, you know, he's quoted, the deputy leader, the deputy prime minister even, Angela Rayner, about everything that is going to happen. But what I would say here is to everybody is, please step up and defer this, agree to defer this, and let's work together across the chamber and get this right, because if we get it right, then County Durham will be hopefully leading the way into getting the housing strategy right for all accommodation types. And I certainly can't sit here and just agree to something that isn't, that isn't right. And I've heard all these comments about, you know, it's 500 new builds and it's 500 council houses. Throughout the whole of those three scrutiny meetings, it has always been referred to as 500 new builds plus associated council-owned properties, in such a way that at the last meeting, there was an amendment to the minutes which councillor Moys has just spoken about, which was accepted, which specifically stated 25, sorry, 500 new build properties, and that is what, that is what always I've had the idea of what this is. And in terms of attending a Cabinet, there was a housing strategy which was written, which was presented, which was amended to 500 new builds. I didn't come to Cabinet because I didn't think that it would be changed to be presented at Cabinet, but what I'm seeing today is a change in wording, and it's been, it's a change in the delivery of what was being said, and councillor Rollinson himself in a scrutiny meeting actually quoted 500 new builds, and he was sat next to officers who confirmed that figure to him. So I'm sorry, it's not just a written report that I've had confirmation about 500, it's actually from the Cabinet member himself. So for me, I'll be supporting this motion, because this for me is about the communities right across County Durham. And in the housing strategy, the City of Durham Trust have specifically talked about getting something sorted out for HMOs, but you might have missed that bit in the objections at the bottom. And I sit in planning as well, and I hear of all these HMOs going through Durham, and I've voted against them, so don't sit there over in the other side of the chamber and suggest that we're all like just letting things go through on the nod, because we absolutely are not. We're fighting for what we've got in our communities Chair, and I will be supporting the motion based on that information, and that this is the right thing to do for our communities across County Durham. This isn't putting the brakes on, this is getting it right. And a couple of months or to the end of the year, it's getting it right. Fingers crossed we'll have a whole new leadership in this council, and then we'll see where council house building goes. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Walton?
Thank you Chair. I would just like to raise a point of order. I know that obviously it's a debate that we're having here, but we've got guests here today from the Children and Care Council, so I'd like to move up agenda, item 30 next, once we've dealt with this please, if that would be acceptable.
I need a second for that councillor Walton? It's been, it's been proposed and seconded, can we all agree? Thank you. Councillor Wood?
Thanks Chair, just to say briefly, speaking in favour of deferring this, I mean, as you've heard, councillor Hood seems to know exactly what's in the King's Speech, but hasn't actually been announced yet, so why don't we see what the Labour Government are going to do and make sure that we are actually working with them to deliver for County Durham? Thanks.
Okay members, just to pick up a couple of procedural issues, so in the registration to speak, we have councillors Shaw and Moys who've registered to speak, but they have already spoken on the motion to adjourn. Councillor Crute seconded, and strictly speaking, should have reserved his right to speak, but the Chair acknowledges that the timing which you seconded it, you perhaps didn't appreciate there would be a debate. So she will exercise her discretion and allow councillor Crute to speak, and then it will fall to councillor Rollinson as the mover of the original set of recommendations to give the right of reply before we go to a vote.
Councillor Crute?
Thanks Chair, there's been a lot of valid points made this morning. We all know HMOs are a vitally important issue, a development issue, they need to be addressed. Been a lot of valid points made about house building and house numbers. But the more important point for me is that as the Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, is that at least half a dozen members of scrutiny this morning have testified, excuse me, that the comments that they made in scrutiny have been disregarded, and that some of the suggestions made in scrutiny, nobody's took notice of them, between scrutiny and the report that went to Cabinet, to the report that's in front of us this morning. So the leader of the council's dead right, there are other places at this council where you can make your voice heard. One of them's Cabinet, the other one is Overview and Scrutiny. Those members have made their points in Overview and Scrutiny on this issue, and there have been discrepancies between that report, the report that's come to Cabinet, and now to full council. And that is the reason why I think we should defer this report. It's not solely about HMOs, it's not solely about council house building numbers, it's not solely about any specific issue in the strategy, it's a matter of process. Comments were made in scrutiny that have been disregarded by Cabinet when this has gone through, they're still being disregarded now, and I think we need to defer this report to allow for it to be put right. Councillor Tinsley made the most important point from my perspective, yes, we need to get this right, and we need, it's timely, yes, we need to get the housing strategy through as quickly as we can. But getting it right is more important than doing it quickly, so I'll move to defer the report, and I would urge every member in here who values the scrutiny function to support this motion.
Councillor Rollinson?
Thank you Chair. I think my name's been mentioned quite a few times during this debate. I can confirm that at the scrutiny meeting that was mentioned, I did confirm there will be 500 new build homes in our strategy. And I think Amy did allude to that in paragraph five of the thing, it says, delivering 500 houses is part of the council house delivery programme. Unfortunately, I think it was missed off. Unfortunately, I think it was missed off, officers at that scrutiny meeting did agree with that figure. To move on Chair. In this strategy, we are and have now a Labour Mayor of Necker. In her, one of her biggest programmes is for new builds in the North East housing. We have put forward housing sites to Necker, for the 200 million pound Brownfield sites, and the strategic place partnership with Homes England. This sends a message to the North East that Labour are not behind that house building programme. The delivery of the homes in this plan, in appendix three of the report, is comprehensive. It sets out how we were going to do it and how we will do it. A delay will set that back, without a doubt. Rural housing is now in the report, we've brought it in, and we see the importance of keeping rural villages as in this county viable.
One minute councillor.
Thank you. Homelessness, I can, can I bring the attention to members that the HMOs was, we have a single homeless strategy which was passed by council. This programme has HMOs in it which would use, which would be used to provide wraparound care for those who have fallen on hard times and are on the streets. This helps bring them back into the, into use, into a proper life, but it appears that Labour don't want this in the east of the county. Chair, I can only be aghast at Labour's ideas today, and it just sends the wrong message that we're not going to build anything in this county. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Can I just ask Helen to clarify?
So we will now put the motion to adjourn the item to the vote. The usual process will apply. Please wait for the buzzer to sound to signify that the vote is open, and then it's one to vote in favour, two against, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, press the right one, and that will correct your vote. We did have a request for a named vote, so how people vote will appear in the minutes. And if you have a problem with your handset, please raise it in the air and a member of the team will come and sort it out for you. Thank you. That's the vote open.
The vote? Motion to adjourn item ten, County Durham Housing Strategy four forty eight against forty five, one abstention. The motion is carried. We move on to item thirteen. Can I just say, and I do have another piece to read, but can I just say from myself personally, thank you so much for sitting through what can be sometimes a little tedious. So item thirteen, before we consider this item, I would like to extend a warm welcome to Luke, Corey and Billy Lee, who have joined us this morning. We will hear from them shortly, but firstly, I invite the Vice Chair of Corporate Parenting Panel councillor Michelle Walton to present the report.
Thank you Chair. I'm councillor Michelle Walton, the elected member for the Dels Lane Division and the Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. I'm here today to present the Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report for endorsement. As the Chair said, I've got with me today Billy Lee, Luke and Corey, who are our co-opted or future co-opted young people's representatives from the Children in Care Council. Firstly, I would like to thank all of the officers from the Corporate Parenting Panel, along with all of the young people who made the annual report possible. The annual report covers the period from April 2023 to March 2024. I will assume that you've all made the effort to read the report and get familiar with its contents, and I so therefore won't go through it all, but I think you will all agree there's a wide range of work taking place across the service to support the young people in our care as well as our care leavers. I would like to allude to some of the achievements we are particularly proud of, including our learning around the language we use, we might not always get it right, but we are making great progress. Our Know What When guide, our poetry book, education fund fund, the supply pack funding, Luke is going to talk some more about this, the good luck cards for exams. John Pearce was the ADCS Director last year, and he invited our young people to present at the conference in Manchester. We've established a regional corporate parenting panel chairs and vice chairs network across the twelve local authority areas. Anybody who sits on the corporate parenting panel will know that I often use the phrase so what. I don't want the corporate parenting panel to just be a talking shop, I want to see real action and results and approved outcomes for our young people, who are in fact your young people. Throughout the next, throughout the year, we meet with the young people from Children in Care Council, who hold us to account on the progress we are making against our priorities, and rightly so. Members, we are all corporate parents, and we all have a duty to fulfil our corporate parenting responsibilities. And even if you don't sit on the corporate parenting panel, you should still be championing our young people on the committees and panels that you do sit on. You should be looking out for them and making sure that any decisions taken have a positive impact on their lives. The Corporate Parenting Annual Report is a great resource for you to see the breadth and scope of all of the work undertaken by the Corporate Parenting Panel and the service. Please use this report as a tool to highlight the good work and share it and champion our young people. I'm extremely proud of the work of the Corporate Parenting Panel and the commitment within the service to ensure that the best possible experiences and outcomes for the young people who are in our care. I present the Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report 2023/2024 for endorsement. And I'd now like to introduce Luke, who would also like to say some words. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Walton. Thank you again for inviting me here, I think it's my third time here, so it's a pleasure, it gets more and more pleasure. And the work of the Corporate Parent Panel is truly special to be a part of. As a young person alongside Billy Lee, I truly feel like my voice is heard. And this year especially has been a special one for me, as I've been given the opportunity to work as part of the council on placement as part of my university degree at Northumbria University. So being, being able to work full time and kind of go through and experience the kind of processes that goes on in council, working for the market team and the finance team, but also doing a lot more work with the children's service, has allowed me to understand a lot more and kind of even, even more, improve my passion to improve the service. And this has created great opportunities for me to be involved in, and I just love hearing other young people's voices and ideas to make better outcomes and co-produce together. And I feel like as a whole council, especially with the work I do regionally nationally, we should be working together to make sure that children's services reaches the heights it can reach. It is in a competition like you might find in the private sector, this public sector is, we're working, we're co-producing together in order to find the best outcomes. Some of the, some of the work I have done, as mentioned, was my supply packs, so that was kind of just an idea that I took to Children in Care Council, and the young people kind of support me on that. And since I take, since I took it to Corporate Parent Panel, they've given me a lot of funding for it and supported me in many ways, trying to get that up and running. And hopefully by this time next month, we would have made our first packs and sent them out to the first few young people coming into care, which hopefully will give them a better, better start of their care experience, giving them items to make them feel more comfortable in their first home, with families that they're not familiar with and around communities that they're not familiar with. Other work that I have been involved in is, I was able to record my own coming into care video, which was quite a, quite a personal video and quite insensitive, but I was supported a lot by many people, including Corporate Parent Panel and other managers and corporate directors. This, this has allowed me to gain more confidence in my work, and the amount of support I got from that video was overwhelming, and it makes me want to do a lot more work with childrens. Interest has opened up for further opportunities to improve support children. So for example, in next year's report, we'll highlight the Experts for Experience group, and the inquiries that we have done from now till then. So far, we've done the Brothers Sisters Inquiry, which will be taken to Corporate Parent Panel this Friday, and hopefully over the next year, we'll be doing more investigations with clear recommendations which will be shared with Corporate Parent Panel and yourselves. Being involved in this work is really, makes me feel, feel really, really proud. I just hope I can, I can keep working harder and getting better at what I do, and hopefully come to more meetings like this, and maybe even sitting at the chair table. Thank you everyone, and I'll now introduce to another young person, who is first time here, Corey, so I'm sure you'll give him a nice warm welcome. Thank you.
Hello, thank you Luke, as he said, I'm Corey. I'm a member of the Children in Care Council and hopefully a future member of the Corporate Parenting Panel. And I've come here today to sort of introduce you what corporate parenting means to me, and why I think that each one of you is a corporate parent and has a role to play in all of it. So a corporate parent to me is we have this sort of officer in children's like social care, it's called an IRO, it's independent reviewing officer, and as I know, has been a topic of fierce debate, is there for scrutiny, and to look at all the services that are affecting the child, and look to improve them, look to make them better. So I think that each one of you has a role to play in looking at maybe your own sectors, maybe like housing, like we've seen, but it's a something you could offer to young people in care in your, in your own regions. It's a something you could offer to make that person, or make a group of people, a group of children care, to make their experiences better. Because the work that you do, although it doesn't directly impact us, like our foster carers or social workers may do, it has an indirect impact and may affect some of us for the better, it may make, it might be that one child's lifeline to get to where they need to be, to get a service that they need, that you can offer, because of your links that you guys have in your sectors. And I really just hope that even if just one of you went away, and if you just looked at maybe one thing that you can do in one of your sectors to maybe add a service that you can offer to children and young people, I think that'll be very important, and I'd be very proud if even just one of yous could do that. And I'd like to introduce Billy now, who'd like to talk some more. Thank you.
Morning all, I hope you're all well. That was actually quite interesting, I do like to sit and watch you all debate. So it's a need and stress, I found it highly entertaining. I just want to remind children that come into the care of the local authority, then become part of the Durham's family, and you are all responsible for these young people. As I say, corporate parent, key word being parent. I would just like to thank the opportunity to be invited back here today, I'm honoured. And it's a pleasure sitting on the Corporate Parent Board, every meeting, I just, it's, don't have the words for it to be honest. And the Corporate Parent Panel, they really do believe, and they take on board what we have to say, they hear us, and it's come to a point where it's not just, it's come to a point where it's not just, we have this issue, this is our solution. They're empowering us to come up with our own solutions. And one of these solutions is our Next Venture Fund, which I'm so incredibly proud of. It is something that I'm going to leave with Durham, and it's going to be my legacy, and in ten, twenty, thirty years' time, when I've got my own children, I'll be able to tell them, like, I was part of that, I set that up, and this co-production is something that I think we need to take forward into the next year, and really, really expand on it. Something else that was mentioned was our Cherished Book, and this is a collection of poems made by Durham's young people. I'd like to extend the opportunity to, you can have a copy, we've left them outside, so you can grab one, there's limited, limited copies, so first come, first served. And just to kind of wrap, wrap what we have to say up, I have, I'm going to read another poem. This one's called A Silent Symphony Ode to the Young People. In a world full of noise, we feel unseen. Are words lost among the chaos like a silent scream? Decisions made without our say leave us lost, oh can you help us find a way? Together, let's build a future that shines with light, in a world filled with possibilities that burn so bright. And when your words fall short, let actions take the stage. Paint a picture, your words simply cannot engage, for in the doing, your true intentions are unfurled. As the saying goes, actions speak louder than any spoken word. Together, let's work, let's work together and conquer any endeavour, but not for me and not for you, for the masses of young people that are desperate for a breakthrough. Let's lead a better way, here and now and today. Act, let's not just say you will, and finally, we'll no longer be at a standstill. The silence of your deeds unspoken reveals a promise spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Poetry is something I love, and I have to say, what you've just read out, is very relevant to some of us as councillors, or shall I say, all of us as councillors. Before I invite speeches, are there any questions? Before I invite speeches, are there any questions on the report? No questions? Would anyone like to speak on the report? Dan Reed?
Anne Reed.
Anne Reed, sorry, sorry Anne.
It's okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair. It's not on the report, it's just a few words, you know, I'm Anne Reed, Crook Division, I'm also Chair of the Children and Young People's Committee. And I just wanted to congratulate all the officers and the members of the Children and Young People's Panel who support our young people in care. I also want to congratulate our young people who are here today, and just say that you are an absolutely great example to every one of us here, and may that continue. Thank you.
Stacey Deanaly?
Thank you Chair, councillor Stacey Deanaly, Black Hills Division. It has been an absolute pleasure to be a member of the Corporate Parenting Panel, and to see all the amazing work that goes on in order to support County Durham children and families. Despite facing significant pressures, it is evident that there are so many positive strategies and initiatives in place to ensure that children and their families receive the best support. We know that there are areas of high levels of deprivation within County Durham, whether increasing numbers of families entering services at crisis point, that our number of children in care is high, and we know that our and we know that our services are underfunded and budgets squeezed. However, our social care teams are constantly going above and beyond to ensure our children receive the best care and support through listening and responding to our children and young people. And for that, I would like to thank them. The report celebrates and reflects our children and young people's achievements and successes. We have some amazingly talented young people. The representatives from the Children in Care Council, Luke, Billy Lee and Corey today are an absolute inspiration and are an asset to our panel. They always bring with them the ambition of the Children in Care Council and are very eloquent in putting forward their ideas. I would like to thank them and the children from the Children in Care Council for all the hard work they do. And I look forward to seeing what we can achieve together in the future. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Hobgood?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I sat on Corporate Parenting Panel for a number of years until it became led by the council. So I would just like to say a huge thank you to every member of the Corporate Parenting Panel, to every councillor who is a corporate parent, but most importantly to our young children, to our young people who engage with us so eloquently. And listening again this year to Billy Lee and to Luke and Corey for your debut. I expect to see you again in future years. And a huge thanks to Rob and the staff in Investing with Children because what they do inspirationally to work with all of these young people for their future should be an inspiration to us all and something that quite a lot of people in here could learn from. So thank you.
Councillor Chris Vardy?
I apologise to our guests first because they don't know that I haven't got a proper voice or anything at the moment. It's an honour to stand here in front of you today. I absolutely adore it when you come to the Corporate Parenting Panel wondering what you're going to say and what we're going to be doing next because you always come with another good idea and get excited because everybody who knows me in corporate parenting, and I'm letting a secret out here to the rest of you, it's my favourite meeting of the month. Absolutely enjoy it. And then you go and tell us what you're doing next and you're going to be doing something and we get invited to go. And it's always really, really good fun. But I have something from my husband. He says, the one we had last issue where you cheated at the quiz we had. Sure where something went wrong there because you're sure what he was winning. I'm not quite sure about that. But you are a treat to listen to, to follow. The whole CICC is brilliant. I'm the owner of a Billy original from, sorry. Talking too long. From a raffle we had somewhere else and that, a treasure that every day, read it every day sets us off. It's lovely. So keep on doing what you're doing. Rob, you're a treasure as well for bringing them along and keeping them going as well. Rachel, keep making sure we have everything doing there as well. So thank you for being here today and keeping us going after what we've all been through here this morning. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you Councillor Vardy. We're having a little bit of a technical issue, so we're going to revert to an old fashioned way. If anyone wishes to speak to, to the children's, just for that, for this one. Would you raise your hand if anyone else wants to speak? No one? Thank you. So can I just say, it's a pleasure to see you here, absolute pleasure and we can always learn a lot. If we, if we more mature people fail to learn from our young people, we're failed in the job we do. But can I ask the council to endorse the annual report? And can I once again thank you, the young people, for attending the meeting this morning? We all agreed?
We agreed.
Thank you. Thank you councillors, we revert back to item 11. The Treasury Management Outturn Report 2023-2024. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Quite an act of following Luke, Corey and Billy Lee, particularly on this item, but I'll try and do it justice. So the report we're considering now gives an overview to the council of our treasury management activity last year and the position to the 31st of March 24 on for the council's borrowing and investments, together with comparisons of the position at the previous year end. In line with the constitutional changes that were agreed at the annual general meeting in May, this report on the council's treasury management position at the end of the year and the activity during 2324 was scrutinised by the Audit Committee at its meeting on the 28th of June. Members will be aware that consideration of this report meets the requirements of the Prudential Code and the report includes details of our performance against the treasury management policy and strategy and supporting prudential indicators agreed by County Council as part of setting the 2324 budget in February 2023. Members will recall that the half year position was considered at the County Council meeting in December of last year. There's a table of paragraph 18 which provides a summary of our overall treasury management position at the year end. And members will see that at the 31st of March, we had total debt outstanding of £412 million and total cash investments of £217 million. Our net debt position therefore being £195 million at the end of last financial year. There are comparison figures set out in that table at the 31st of March 23. And members will see that our net debt position at the, at the previous year end, sorry, at this year end was £106 million higher than at the beginning of the financial year, with our external borrowing actually being £28 million lower, but our cash investments being £134 million lower, reflecting the use of cash balances to repay maturity loans during the year, to refinance some debt rescheduling during the year and the application of reserves to fund one-off expenditure and the use of cash balances, capital receipts and capital grants to meet financing costs on the capital programme in lieu of borrowing. The council's borrowing activity during the year is detailed in sections 20 to 25 of the report and confirmed to council no new borrowing was taken out in 2324, reflecting a strategy of delaying new borrowing whilst interest rates remain high and utilising internal borrowing or using our cash balances instead. As members will see, we undertook some debt rescheduling to repay some historic higher interest loans totaling £5 million of low borrow loans. And there was a £20 million PDLB maturity loan repaid in the year, together with some principal repayments on annuity loans totaling just over £3 million. In paragraphs 26 and 27, there's an overview of our other external debt and long-term liabilities held by the council and these principally relate to long-term PFI liabilities and finance leases, most notably those linked to vehicle leasing. The report highlights that work is under way to ensure compliance with the International Financial Reporting Standard Number 16, which deals with the accounting arrangement for leases and which will result in traditional operating leases, like those liabilities being brought onto the balance sheet and the council's overall debt position increasing going forward. These new accounting standards apply to all local authorities from the current financial year and seek to bring treatment of these leases in line with the private sector. And the half year report I'll bring to council later on this year will factor in those new liabilities. An overview of our investment activities set out in sections 33 to 38 and the table of paragraph 34 provides a breakdown of the institutions, the length of investments and the interest rates secured on those investments at the end of last financial year. All investments undertaken in the year and those held at the 31st of March remain in line with our treasury management strategy and associated policies. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, from paragraph 39 onwards, the report sets out details of performance against the various treasury management and prudential indicators include details of our capital expenditure and financing arrangements and the capital financing requirement in 2324. In summary, and I appreciate this is quite a technical report, members can take assurance from the fact that the council remains in a very strong position in terms of treasury management activity and position and we fully complied with all treasury management strategy and policies and Hasen will continue to meet all the requirements of the Prudential Code. Chair, the recommendations are for council to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I invite speeches, are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Bell?
Thank you Chair and thank you Paul, a technical report but an inspiring one nonetheless as usual. I'd like to thank Paul and all the officers for this comprehensive update on our treasury management activity and for the information setting out our position as of the end of March. And also thank the Audit Committee for their scrutiny of this report at their meeting on the 28th of June. It's pleasing to note that across the last financial year, the council has fully complied with all the requirements of the treasury management policy and strategy we agreed in February 23. It's important that as a council, our officers carefully manage our cash flows, external borrowing and investments and ensure we maintain in compliance with the relevant codes of practice in line with the prudential framework as this is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for the effective stewardship of public money. Among other things, this involves keeping a close eye on movements and likely future movements of interest rates. With that Chair, I would like to move that council notes the report.
Thank you Councillor, Councillor David Hall?
Hi, sorry, I think I put my name down for a question, so I wasn't sure whether to put my hand up or just wait for you to call me, sorry about that. It was just a brief question, but it's a concern I've had for a while in terms of presumably paying down our debt releases revenue to be used for services, is that right? So you're paying less interest on the debt, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So do we have a strategy, because we seem to have a land sale strategy at the moment. I have asked the question about it recently and I was referring to the Regen team and haven't got a response yet. A recent example of a property in Durham city that's owned by the council, I think it was purchased under compulsory purchase for when North Road was going to be fully redone, but then that didn't happen. It's currently up for sale. So that's a recent small example where we've got a building where we could be generating revenue. There's other bits and pieces of land admittedly not, not selling off maybe as much as we have in past times. And obviously a bigger example of that, and not to, you know, bang a drum too much about it, but it is a concern, a genuine concern as a taxpayer myself. When the HQ was sold, obviously £19 million was generated of capital from that. If that had been paid off of debt, presumably that would have freed revenue to, to be used for services. So I'm just, are we losing money here by, by using capital on non-priority stuff and selling off bits of land that we could be generating revenue from? Is there a strategy around this or am I barking up the wrong tree? Thank you.
Right, thank you for the question. The council has a capital programme, the capital programmes agree in this, in this chamber as part of the annual budget setting process and in that, that programme has to be funded and it's funded in a range of ways. A part of the funding for the capital expenditure is through the generation of capital receipts and so selling off land and buildings to generate cash that can then used to fund those, that capital expenditure together with government grants and sort of other external funding we can leverage in. But a big chunk of the capital programme is predicated on what's called prudential borrowing and that prudential borrowing incurs costs, incurs a revenue cost. And within our annual revenue budget and our medium term financial plan, we make provision for a prudential, a prudent level of increase in our external borrowing costs. You'll see in the report, Councillor Hall, that one of the prudential indicators sort of tracks our actual debt position against what's called our capital financing requirement. And what the capital financing requirement tracks is what is the, what is the borrowing we need to undertake to fund expenditure we've already incurred? And you'll see that at the end of 2324, we were, we were £92 million underborrowed. So we have got revenue provision to borrow that £92 million. The strategy outlined when I present the report is we're delaying decisions on taking those loans out because the interest rates are high at the moment, but are forecast to reduce over the next sort of six months so that when we lock in that extra borrowing that which we need to take out, we'll be able to secure that at rates that are affordable and prudent within the, within the medium term financial plan. I think your question around that specific asset is something that sort of sits outside of this report, but I'm happy to, to come back to you on that sort of revenue generating assets.
Just one final question and apologise for my ignorance of your finance matters in advance if it's, it's not fully informed. But how can we be underborrowed when there's services that require funding that are being cut? So.
So we have made provision in the revenue account for that borrowing, for the cost of that borrowing. We just haven't taken the loans out at this stage because the interest rates we would lock into if we took the loans out at this stage would be higher than the provision that's been made in the revenue budget to service those, to service those loans.
So what comes first, the funding of services or the provision of future debt for whatever projects that you've identified? And how do you balance the need for the service funding against the need for whatever capital funding you're wanting to service with getting borrowing to then service through the revenue, the interest for that borrowing? Sorry.
That, that's ultimately a political choice and a question of priorities for, for the members. So what comes first is the budget. So we will have an annual revenue budget which we agree and we set the council tax on. That has to be a balanced position, so that needs to take into account the financing costs of expenditure you have already incurred. But across the medium term financial plan, members in this, in this chamber will agree a capital programme with this range of investments over the coming years and those investments need funding. And within the medium term financial plan, there will be provision within that medium term financial plan forecast to meet the cost of those borrowing. Ultimately, that is a decision for council as part of setting the budget, agreeing the levels of council tax, where revenue expenditure is, is invested. So the smaller the capital programme, the less the need for borrowing, the less additional budget pressure that goes into the medium term financial plan. The bigger the capital programme, the bigger the element of prudential borrowing, the more that needs to go into the, into the revenue budget. There is no such thing as sort of free money. So all borrowing needs to be financed and ultimately what that capital is invested in and how it is funded are decisions for yourselves as part of the annual budget setting process. So it's not a question of what comes first, it is considered in the round in terms of the impact on the revenue budget of investing in assets and investing in new facilities as part of that sort of annual capital budget setting process.
Councillors, we're very conscious of the time. Can we note this report? We all agreed? Thank you. Councillors, we have still three items to discuss. My question is, do you want to extend? Councillor? Councillor?
Chair, can I move that we adjourn each of these to the next full council, given that none of them are time sensitive?
Is that seconded?
Second that Chair.
Councillor Marshall?
Chair, just by way of comment on the motion really, I agree that sentiment of the motion could be deferred until September, I'm okay with that. But what I'd like to do in doing that, before we accept the, the motion that's been proposed and seconded, time is the essence with some of this stuff. It's important that we broker those relationships now with our MPs and with the new government. So I'd ask that the leader and deputy leader agree to sit down with me and my deputy leader and the chief exec to come up with a political strategy as to how we can hit the ground running to secure some investment for the county.
Chair, if it helps, I'll briefly not read what I was going to say to the motion, but just confirm that I've already wrote to all six of our new MPs, congratulating them, stating how we look forward to working with them in the future going forward for the residents of County Durham. I've had a letter from.
Point of order Chair.
Hang on, I haven't finished, can you let us finish please? I've had it because this refers to the government, so the motion refers to the government, I've had a letter from the Deputy Prime Minister.
Councillor Hopgood, can we just hang on, point of order, we need to take the point of order.
So the point of order was just whether she agreed to meet with me and the deputy leader, the chief exec, with the deputy leader of the council, that, that's all I needed, thank you.
Chair, can I just refer back to the motion is about government, so that's what I want to highlight, but I will pick that up as well. So I have written to the Deputy Prime Minister, we've also written to the Prime Minister, and I'm actually at a meeting tomorrow in London with the Deputy Prime Minister and other local government leaders. So I would always, always open to meet with Councillor Marshall and Councillor Crook, as they know, so I have no problems with that whatsoever. We did, used to have a monthly meeting in the diary, that just disappeared. So anytime, we're prepared to meet with them, thank you.
So thank you for that councillor, can we all agree that the items are deferred to September, all the motions that are left? Thank you. So that, councillors, that concludes the business.